Joel moves.
Second. No, no two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next we have Caleb Green here to do the vision statement and mission statement.
All right, Caleb Green, fourth grader. Parents are Kyle and Michelle Green. Siblings, has seven. And there's, so there's six girls and two boys total, right? Caleb's favorite subject is science. One of the things he said, we get to build and light up a light bulb tomorrow in science class. So that's pretty exciting. Some of his interests and hobbies are fishing. Caught fifteen pound carp this summer, I believe it was. And then playing with friends, playing cranks on his family. So, welcome Caleb. Take it away, my love.
This is cool, vision statement and news. Mission statement. Empower students to become independent learners, personally accountable and responsible citizens. Police statement. To old school district police, everyone in the community contributes to the education of the children in our schools. Therefore, we are committed to personal responsibility and accountability. Respecting others and maintaining an open mind of communication in the district. Providing opportunities and resources for individual success. Maintaining and communicating high academic and professional standards.
Good job Caleb, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thanks Green, Greenlee. And next we have public comment and visitors, and we have Lynn Sultanberg here.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to give your formula?
Introduction.
No.
How many brothers has this been serving?
That's a long story and we don't have time for that. I was asked to come and visit just a little bit about where we're at with the playground committee. We started out trying to just come up with a plan to take what's already there and make it better. And we kind of got going with that and then kind of hit a not a standstill, but kind of went in some circles for a while. And I think what happened is we kind of got going and realized that the costs involved were going to be a little more than we really kind of anticipated with if my philosophy of go big or go home. I was probably gonna ask about home. And so we kind of revised some things and we're have been kind of going around trying to figure out how can we do this and make it doable. And so originally we talked about surfacing the entire area. The mini football field, the whole thing. And I think we've decided that if we leave the field out there grass and take a look at the equipment area and make that more accessible. Level that area under the existing equipment and extend that along the building. And then even out to the fence line. We can put swings back in. We've talked to the kids about what equipment is missing that you would like to see back. Swings are a huge item that they would really like to have back. So we would like to take a strip basically along the building out to the fence line. Put some swings back out there. And put some new equipment in that space between the existing equipment, where the tree is, and then the swings on the other side. The surface that we would like to do is turf. It's kind of the in-between. And it would allow us to get rid of the rubber chips and the I just watched a kid today at recess come running the line up and face plant it because of that lip. You know, that little wall.
That holds the chips in.
Yeah, that holds the chips in. So anyway, it would just make it more accessible. We could do some, you know, the aid and compliance stuff. But it would make it level, easier access for all the kiddos. We'd be able to put some equipment in there that would be for all kids. And the turf is gonna, you know, it's that middle of the road. It's, you know, it moves us away from the P rock or the wood chips or the rubber chips. The foam is probably the higher end, but that's not always cut out to be either. There are some issues with that too. So we're looking at the turf as the surface. Also, you know, it's got about a 15-year lifespan for that turf. They did say you can go in and take out. You know, like if you have a section that's more worn than other sections, you could go and take that out and just replace that section rather than all of it if you
Like any of the swings.
Yeah, exactly. So, just something to consider.
Get rid of the rubber chips altogether?
Yeah.
You're working with a third party, right, to do all this?
Yeah. Yeah, so we were hoping to work with Spearscapes, which is a subsidiary of Mammoth Construction. They've been kind of very patient with us as we go around and around about what type of equipment. If this is too expensive or this just doesn't fit our needs for our kiddos. Right now, we're hoping to kind of finalize the equipment that we'd like to see in place to get a final package price. We've also contacted Lee Melendorf and we're hoping to maybe get a ballpark figure on what it would cost to have him come in. And right now, the field area is kind of a bowl. And if he could come in, he took a look at it and said he didn't think that we would need to put drainage tile in there. He thought if we just built it up, that would help with that. So he was concerned that it's all fenced in and we'd have to take the fence out. But we have to take the fence out in order to do the other stuff anyway. So if we can coordinate that somehow. Anyway, so if he would give us an idea of what it would cost to put some fill in there and level that out. So that hopefully that would take care of some of the cool issues that we have in the spring. Maybe that would be enough to make our field a little bit better.
What's your timetable on this?
The hope would be if we can get a plan figured out, get those ballpark figures in place. You know, we're hoping to be able to put a plan out maybe to the community before Christmas even. And then do our fundraising and hopefully even I mean, it would be awesome if by spring we could have something.
A summer project.
Yeah. Webster was able to do it. They were able to raise $400,000 in a four-month timing period. They were fortunate, they had $100,000 donation, automatic donation into that. So I don't know that that's realistic, but we're hoping. You know, we'll start looking at grant money, if we can find some and see what we can win.
And what do you think of the cost is gonna be on this?
We're hoping to keep it within that $400,000 range. Taking the field out of it kind of helped with that. If we do the resurfacing just in that strip, we're right at about $400,000.
And then our equipment's gonna be what? That's what that all
That's including the equipment.
And your equipment's gonna be what? Swings and, I mean
That would be, so what we have previously what he priced out for us was swings, a merry-go-round, a bench, an inclusive structure, and a teeter totter. We went online and found the equipment, piece of equipment that they had listed that was had a whole bunch more stuff and included, it was like 90, I don't know, what was it? Was it $90,000 for that? $100,000 for that, but it also included swings and some other stuff, so
It does.
Yes, yeah. We're gonna send an email back and say, hey, what if we did this instead of all these other separate pieces and
The most overpriced stuff.
Exactly, absolutely, absolutely.
You just scratched your head.
Yep, I know, yep, exactly. So anyway.
So there's a committee working on this, about how many people?
There are 10 of us, I believe. Yeah.
The turf part of it would be how much?
Just the surfacing, which would include a concrete mow strip, the concrete sidewalk, the base construction, the turf surfacing, the fall protection pad underneath, minus the securi pass. So take off about $250,000.
So that's the large part.
And you're hoping to fundraise all of it or a percentage of one?
You know, just last fall, spring? When was that again? What is it now? This is fall. Last spring, you know, Mr. Ralph had talked to the PE teachers and our, previously our Jump Hope for Heart fundraiser and had them do that instead of Jump Hope for Heart, they, what did we call it?
I don't remember.
Something for Dual. Anyway, the funds that they raised for that went for our playground. That was almost $18,000 and that was kind of without even promoting it. I think there's a lot of community support for it, obviously. There's only so much that your community can do and we'll do whatever we can to try to reach out to Stanford and some of maybe those other larger businesses and stuff. Maybe some grant money, whatever we can, but I think there's
So is this, is this like a castle type deal, you know, like a kid castle? We climb in and slides and all that stuff? Is that part of it?
Yeah.
One of those.
Yeah, we, originally we had looked at separate pieces and then when they sent us the plan, we looked at it and went no, we don't like that. We want a solid structure in there. And so then we've kind of gone back and forth and asking the kids, what are some of the things that we used to have that you really want? You want a roll slide, you know, those finger printer things? Or the back from there? Uh huh, yep. Yeah, the roll bars.
The little tubes that roll on the Oh, really?
Yep.
Every single? They had one out on
They used to have one out on the
Yeah.
Hard to get torn out.
Before, yeah, before remote. How old is her existing, do you know?
It's about, okay. Diane on the previous.
She could have been
Yeah. The equipment that's out there now, I wanna say is 15 to 20 years.
Sure, that'll just be a question I think our community
Yeah. Bonnie is on this committee and she was on the previous playground committee.
And we are hoping to keep that existing.
Yes, yeah.
I was just curious to know. The reason why I was asking that is what's the life long span of that?
Yep.
You know, are we gonna do this again in five years? Which maybe, but
We have to kind of look at it and see if it's solid.
Yep, absolutely. Hopefully, hopefully here in the next month or two, we'll be able to kind of finalize some of our plan and be able to actually have a image that we can
Down this field, there isn't 30,000, 20,000 looking material in it.
Right.
That's how they make their money though.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Well, thanks for giving us an update, I was curious.
Yep.
Good. Thank you. Any questions, other questions? Well, we're looking forward to another update with the images and the price and promote it too.
Absolutely. I'll send somebody else nice.
No! Great. Well, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks Lynn. Yes. Okay, next we'll go to conflict of interest disclosures. Consent agenda is the meeting minutes from the September 8th meeting and the September 25th payroll. I'll take a motion for those.
Motion, second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, there's no old business, so we'll just go to new business. The next is the financial report from the end of September. And that's on page six, starting. It was for quite a while. So page 15, we say. Any questions on the finances before the bills? Ellen, I do like these expenditure and revenue reports that are very helpful. Does this hear well, Lynn?
Yeah.
Most months we get some income in.
Some, yeah, we have some revenue every month. I mean, we get some tax dollars in every month, but twice a year and even when we get the big ones, but yeah. And there, and there's always gonna be some revenue because we also have like food service revenue. We do the reimbursement every month and so there's always gonna be some kind of revenue. Let's get our state, yeah.
Can I see, a hundred thousand in there?
What's that?
A hundred thousand in the food service thing there.
Last year.
We did last year, yeah, we did last year and then, because we were in there a year before, but yeah, and that's what we have budgeted issue too, we'll see where we end up.
Well, just on page, um, six, you got a hundred thousand. Right? Could that be this month?
The what?
Could that be this month? For revenue?
The cash report on page six.
Yeah.
There's a hundred dollar.
Hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand. That's
Right under food service. For revenue, other. Is that supposed to be there or not?
I don't know what that is.
Because you would do the transfer at the end of the year, not the beginning of the year.
Yeah, right at the end of the year.
I'll check it out.
I'll check it out.
I didn't know where it came from.
It's in balance.
I'm trying to think what it is because it's in other. It's not in
But wouldn't that be where you do the transfers?
Well, it would be, yeah, it would be. The transfer we did in
Yeah, I'll check it out, see where that comes in. You don't have a general fund deduction either, it should have been in there, shouldn't it?
If that's what it was.
If that's what it was, if that isn't there. And then, you know, that would make this 119,000 over 19,000. The bottom balance, right? Check it out.
I will check it out, I'm trying to think what that is.
Yeah, I just didn't see the minus on the children or on the general fund. Is in this month, you know?
Any other questions on the financial reports?
You can just send us a
I can send, yeah, I can send it mail. I can send it email, yeah.
We're good? Take a motion?
Well
We'll get to the bills next.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Tony? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the bills. Page 16 and 17. I think we could go over the capital, hourly ones, unless you guys had a question about the general fund ones first. I did ask Ellen about the otter tail, looks like it went up a little bit. Looks like we have more electricity usage is why. Sorry, I asked about that.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that one's been all over the place, so hopefully it'll help us out here.
Right.
But it just looked like, I mean, there wasn't like any adjustment or anything. It was just, you know what I mean, the reading from last month and the reading from this month was well, actually from last month, but from the month before was just quite a bit more. Place both the school and session and well, yeah. With stuff on all the time, it's been hot, yeah.
It's been hot, yeah.
So then it'll flip over and we'll be doing heat, so it'll be the same thing.
Textbooks, textbooks cost is $76, right?
Where are you going to?
Does that, do you have that budgeting going in?
Yeah.
And then pocket pairs is what?
That is, so those dollars actually, there's gonna be more of them coming up next month. What that is, is we use some brief grant dollars to purchase some stuff for Katie Heeker. And so so it's gonna end up being around $45,000 total for that stuff. But we have brief grant dollars for that. And that was all put in the budget because we
Is that a one-to-one grant dollars or are we gonna have it?
No, there won't be any costs, it's all covered under grant dollars. So this is just part of it and I think the rest of the equipment came in, so I just would assume next month we'll have the rest of those costs, but that's what that would be for, yeah. So it's for some of her, one of her classes.
And then, just, I don't even, silver or aluminum this one?
It's aluminum tables.
Oh, okay.
Just some more tables, we have those like aluminum ones that we use for everything. We just ordered a few more of those.
I saw they were new.
Yeah.
They're nice, but not as heavy.
And then just tracking through on this, you know, this budget thing. Spending using revenue.
Yep.
That hundred thousand is sure from there either, so that didn't make some
That's not gonna show up though because that, the revenue and expenses is through the end of last month. So it's not, it's not revenue expenses. Yep, it's to the end of September, yes, yeah. So October stuff is not, would not be
But so have your
Oh, so was that, okay.
So your first report was done after we were first.
That would have been, yeah, that ended up September, yeah, I'll look at that.
That's why I talked, anyway, move on.
Okay.
Yeah. Any
Anybody else? Anybody else?
No, okay. I'll take a motion to approve. The bills.
Joel moves. Second.
So you weigh in, sorry?
Yes.
Thanks. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next is Robert Bagalka, the volunteer middle school football coach.
We missed this for some reason last month, so Rob has been helping out with middle school football. Which I think for the most part they wrapped up today, so in hindsight, but we're still gonna, he's been helping out, taking varsity stats at football games too, so helping a little bit.
Thanks to Rob.
So we need to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead, motion, I'll take a motion.
Joel makes a motion. Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then the next is a hire, I can butcher this, Danette Brown. As a paraprofessional and salary listed there.
Yep, we hired two paras. Danette is actually down in Lindsay Crotz's room at the elementary, so
She'll be in elementary before that.
Yep, she's in elementary.
And how many do we have in the elementary right now?
I have to look. Todd, you know what I have now?
We have two, three?
Or a half dozen.
Oh, there isn't any. They're not going to spend.
Yeah, like
Well, they're spent, yeah, so
With the exception of preschool.
Yeah, all the parents, yeah.
So then that will be a spend.
You have their
Yeah, right. All right, I'll take a motion for Danette Brown, hired.
I'll make a motion.
Wait a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hire Suzanne Churchill, is a spend professional.
Same thing, she's kind of going back between middle school and high school right now. She's been a long time sub here for us and we lost a good sub, but she was looking for employment somewhere, so we figured we'd snatch her here.
Yeah, she's great.
Okay, Joel moves.
Thanks. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is approving Rodney Freeman, education law meeting contribution request. China sent that out ahead of time.
Yeah, he does this every year. For anything that just requires a phone call or a quick question, he goes and charges for it. And then in turn, he asks for a $160 to go to his education law seminar every year, so it's a good payout.
Yeah, I agree with that.
A $160.
Yep.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Thank you. On favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next is snow removal quotes.
We only received one quote from Weiser Construction, and it's skids here a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour and with a backhoe. With snow pushers, a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
What did you say the first number was? What was it, one twenty-five?
A hundred and seventy-five, one hundred and seventy-five, both of them.
Oh.
I think that was the same as what it was last year, I remember.
That's the only one. So we'll take a motion to approve that one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second please.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next we'll go over a couple of policies. So the first one is we'll amend AE, the wellness policy. We'll talk about them each and then approve them all three at the, at the end.
Okay, I will go through the, the, these are very small changes. If you look on page twenty-four, the only change to policy KE is an update on who's on the wellness committee. Changed Ellen, and then the other one was, um, an elementary teacher, so removing Leah. Leah was on there yet, so.
I don't want to answer those again.
Policies DID and DJ, the subsequent policies in your packet, which start on page, um.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-two.
Oh.
Thirty-one and thirty-two, um, it's just a monetary change to the capitalization threshold went from five thousand to ten thousand. So it's now represented in both of those two policies, so. That's it.
And then there were more you said in the email.
I received them, yeah, like, Wednesday or Thursday last week, and didn't, I got through two or three of them, but I'll, I'll be bringing that whole slate to you next month.
Any questions on the policies? Take a motion to approve those changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
Joel's second.
All right, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next we'll get to the reports. Mr. Schreberg first.
Okay, I've got a handout that I put on your desk there with a graph. First thing I'm going to talk about is the cooperatives that we've been working on the last couple of months. Hamlin approved their gymnastics co-op, but they weren't sure if they were even going to send a girl over. Dubrook did not approve their gymnastics contract. Uh, I don't know if it was something that they did, they wanted to get in right now and, and commit to, so. In a sense, they put it on the table for another year. I'm sure that will be coming back at some point. I did share the same information with their superintendent that I shared with you last month in regards to what we were offering for the fifteen hundred dollars a piece and then capping it. He was fairly confident that that shouldn't be an issue and that we will be, um, keep going.
A what program?
Wrestling, yeah, this is wrestling, so, um, I'll find out tomorrow. He's going to call me either way. I know one of the concerns was, okay, what happens if we don't? Are we still going to have wrestling? And it starts in November, and I'm like, yeah, we can bring it back to the board and negotiate this. I don't want to lose a, lose a program over, over this, so I don't anticipate that happening, but, um, I'll find out tomorrow and let everybody know what, what became of it, so. Uh, your handout here, I have our student count. This is an unofficial student count. I have not got the certified count from the, um, DOE in the mail yet, but as of last Thursday and Friday, according to the admin assistance, we are sitting at four ninety-nine. Um, and just note, um, that preschool is not included in that number, so this is JK through twelve. So we are actually down twenty-four point odd students, so talking of a lot of superintendents, a lot of, a lot of them are down, a lot of schools are down, so. That is what it is at this point. Um, I'll let you know what the official count is as soon as I receive it. I should be receiving it this week.
We talked about some of the causes last year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you said the thirty, the thirty-three and JK doesn't count?
Nope, the thirty-three does not count. JK does count as kindergarten.
Preschool doesn't?
Yep, just preschool is exempt.
Right, and that's, that's what I meant, thirty-three.
Thirty-three is a solid number and we, yeah, so.
No, right, right.
We just did preschool screening and we had a large number of, of kids coming up too, so.
I'm just saying this because it'd be nice, you know, that's the number that maybe we will have for kindergarten.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, exactly.
Yeah?
Uh, CSI, um, the one thing I did want to talk to you, Rob, before I get into the meeting, is a work that we've done here this past week or this year so far was, the email that I got, we'd inquired about the, uh, grant dollars that we were supposed to receive, which was thirty thousand dollars. I was told that those were to be gifted to us after following up with them. I don't know if they switched their mind or what exactly they did, because I shared the email with, uh, with Ellen at the same time, and she read it the same way I did, so.
Remember that was reported?
Yeah, we had the dollars, yeah, but, um, that did not happen, so.
And they said they just don't have it for the fourth year, or they're not, it's an eligible program?
She read the comment that I could see where you came, like, I didn't read it right. So I said, well, you can tell the gentleman that sent that to me. He can come and explain it to my board in October.
So what's the bottom line here?
Bottom line is, uh, we have to pay for, uh, four quarterly installments of eighty-eight fifty, I think is what I sent out. So we're looking at, uh, the thirty thousand that I had sent out to you guys that we're going to have to pay for this year if we continue to do this. So. Obviously, it's not, uh, not a budget item. My recommendation, um, moving forward is that we can hopefully do it. I think we all think that it's, it's, um, definitely worth the time. We've got some great resources, even the work we did this week has just been, it's been really good. The one thing moving forward, their company, you know, through kind of a reorganizational thing in probably the last six months, so they, they no longer say, okay, here's the package and it costs thirty thousand. We can now piecemeal it and, and choose from their base package, which is ten thousand, and go all the way up and get as much support as you probably, as you want, so. I have a feeling after doing this with them for two years, the majority of what we're paying for is when they come on site and they are flying in, and we're paying for those expenses. And she, she also admitted that too. Um, it's nice when she's on site, but I think we get just as much done when, when we remote in with her as well, so. Now granted, that's next year, and we can look at those packages next year, but I wanted to have some discussion of what you guys feel. Moving forward with our existing and paying that much that's not budgeted.
So let's go over this again. We got, we were told by who that we were getting the grant money?
DOE.
And we signed a contract?
And all of a sudden DOE isn't going to pay for this?
Right.
And we've already made payments for this calendar year?
We made one quarterly payment. It's like, only got one email so far.
We have no records, or just?
No, we can either, uh, end the contract and not pay anymore or.
No, I mean with the DOE.
Yeah.
So what did they say about the, what was, what was the issue? Why did they say, why?
She didn't sound like I interpreted it wrong, or I could see how you, uh.
Because it looked like the grant was for thirty thousand dollars a year for four years, is what it looked like when we read it.
This was the first year?
No, last year was the, was the first year, because we got the thirty thousand dollars last year.
And so why did we get it last year and not this year? Did you ask them that? Why did we get it the first year and not this year?
So CSI, we're looking at, we did last year, we're looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, and we're looking at twenty-six, twenty-seven, also with CSI, or are we just, are we looking at?
If we choose to do it next year.
So we would do three years of it?
Potentially.
We first have to decide if we're going to finish this year.
Yeah, that's what I need to know, and I was, I was very upfront with Gail and told her our situation, and she said, I, I have a chance.
So give us a little bit more meat and potatoes around why, why you think we should keep, we should pay the thirty grand to keep them going, like, what are you getting out of it?
And I can go through, maybe I need to go through with some of the stuff here that, that we have done.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Probably more so this week.
Yeah.
Uh, your second page here, uh, and this is kind of a working document every time we meet with, we meet with Gail. You guys can add your two cents as well. Todd and Katie and Hannah also sit in on these two. There's a narrative here on your, on your next page about some of the changes, um, of some of the work that we've done in regards to the scorecard. And we look at the scorecard, or will be, at subsequent meetings, just to talk about some of our progress and manage, uh, find out where we're at, measure these goals. So for instance, you know, uh, we talked about school management and, uh, Joel and Leah and I, we took out facilities and we put school management in there. This past week, we talked about, um, what used to be student behavior and changed it to student culture. We didn't think that sounded like a real positive thing. We talked about each one of these pillars and what we're doing with them. And even though, for instance, like, uh, school pride, parent and community engagement, that hasn't been a focus, we're still doing those things. They're, they're hardwired into what we, what we do annually, so, um, as we look at these things, um, it's ongoing and they all, they all mesh with each other. They're kind of, I don't know what else to say. It's kind of a, a cycle that we're, that we're in. The rounding piece, which we introduced to you guys last year, one of our big questions was, when we have all of these individual meetings with teachers, is, okay, we have all of this data. And when we sit down with the teacher and have a short ten-minute rounding session, you ask the questions, you take notes, and then we have all of this data at the end of the year. Okay, what do we do with this? How do we, how do we measure, what are some improvements we can make? So ironically, it was about a month ago, they introduced an online platform for schools to use through Studer, where it's all preloaded, all of the names are preloaded. Your templates for rounding, the questions, everything is in there, and it generates, um, a report after you've rounded, let's say, ten, fifteen individuals. It generates a, an AI report that says, okay, here's, here's some common themes from your rounding, here's what your teachers like, here's what they don't like. And then from that same platform, um, if I, if I'm rounding with Ellen, which I actually did last week, and Ellen, um, I'll ask, I'll ask, okay, who can I recognize on your behalf, Ellen? She can give a, an attaboy to whoever she wants and explain why, so, and it's no secret, she, she was very happy with, uh, Mackenzie Connell's work, so. I typed up a commando ground to, uh, Mackenzie Connell and said, Ellen has recognized you on her behalf. She appreciates all your work with campus. So it's, it's nice to get that, so, um, it's actually nice. I actually had received one too, so. It's nice. I don't know as if we've done enough rounding yet in the last couple of weeks to generate a report, but it's a place to house all of that information and organize who we are rounding as well, so.
And give you data.
And give, and, and give you data too, so, um, it's a really, it's a really neat platform. Easy, it's really easy to use as well. And then I had the other thing on here is the profile of graduates, uh, which was what we had put out there at the end of the, the year last year. We didn't get a great response. I think we got about forty-five responses, but those that took the time to answer the questions, um, came up with some really good data. And, and Gail put this together, um, with the help of, you know, her expertise, not only her expertise, but she took that data and, and generated a report as well. These are all good things. I think this is probably something that every school would want to have in regards to what they want their kids to graduate with. They want to be able to think and collaborate, have high integrity, character, resilience, life skills, leadership. And then they've got a bunch of adjectives on the bottom there that describe what they should possess. Confident, kind, moreover, just being a good person, hardworking, lifelong learner. Respectful, those are a lot of the, the common themes that came out of that, so. So that's nice, and it's something that we can turn around. A lot of this stuff is nice, and we can turn around and share it with, with not only you as a board, but, for instance, the focus group the other way. I shared it with the focus group and got, hey, here's what, here's what drives us here at DOE, here's what we're doing. So some of those are the things, uh, that we work on, that we, we benefit from Studer, um, and that's what I'm going to continue and get better.
Do you have a goals from Gail of what's, what goals we want to work on for the rest of the year?
Yeah, they're more quarterly than anything.
Is it new things, or is it, like, are we just taking what we've learned from them last year and building off of it, or is there more introductions to things?
At this point, no, there's not. It's more working with our strategic plan, that scorecard, and then just building on each of those pillars. So for instance, I wouldn't necessarily say as if we've mastered the family engagement pillar, but we're, we haven't put as much focus on that because we're already doing some of those things. So hopefully that answers your question. So yeah, that's, that's my two cents. Granted, like I said, it's not budgeted. The only thing I can say here and say from a simplistic point of view is, hey, we didn't hire Amanda Hillis time. That would maybe be a third of her salary or half of her salary. That's a very simplistic view of that, but. Yeah, so I mean, that's my two cents. I don't know if you guys have anything to add to that?
What do you mean by this, Joe?
Well, it depends on when you want to, if we were looking at mixing the contracts sooner than later, otherwise it's costing us every day.
So you're saying we get budgeted for Amanda? Is that maybe?
Yeah.
So you're saying that the budget, the, the general fund is there?
Yeah, I don't know if you took her out at the end.
I think you took her out.
You might have taken her out at the end.
So the budget doesn't reflect that, so it's not, and, and those monies could have been used towards other things, but, yeah. So it's not in there now, so it'd be an add of thirty grand?
And we're over budgeting.
It's not add, but the thirty grand in the budget, it's a, we would be short the revenue.
Yeah, it's, it's an add.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, because we'd be, yeah, we'd be short revenue, yeah. It's the expense, it's in the budget, yes, yeah, but it's, yeah.
It's just not going to be covered by that.
Right, but, uh, yeah, but the revenue would not be, we would not have that thirty thousand in revenue that's in the budget.
And the rounding template comes, so do we, how does this work? Do we have to pay them every year for, for the action?
It sounds like it's going to be an annual, yeah.
That's outside of the thirty, right?
Fifty is outside of that, it's fifty-three dollars.
Is that something you could use without having the, the other thirty thousand?
I didn't ask that. I don't know if they offer it to people that they don't engage with. I didn't ask that. It's a big part of that.
Would they give us that rate because we're going to?
And I can, I can ask more questions too, and we can decide next month too. That's up to you guys.
I think we ought to think on this, no?
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
I mean, if we're set square in our budget, revenue equal expense, it, it doesn't, so. Apparently catch it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a hard call. I mean, it's really a good, I, I guess, I, I think it's been a good thing, I mean, in a lot of ways, I mean, it.
What is that? Yeah, I don't, I don't even know how to quantify it. And that's what I'm trying to think, like, okay, so how much, you know, how do you, uh, of your overall improved communication slash implementation of the strategic plan, I mean, I, I think it's help.
I wish I could say, but. Yeah.
Or, I mean, I don't know what, I.
The only thing I can say, and these guys can say it too, it just seems as if every time we have a conversation with her, we get some sort of a takeaway that she can provide, whether it's her expertise or an idea about doing something differently, so, or her work with other schools. Hey, some other schools have done this, and it might not be something that I'm going to report up to the board, it might be something internally that schools have done. So yeah, that's a good question. How do you quantify, um, bang for your buck?
Yeah, I feel like it's a benefit for sure, but it's hard to understand. Is it thirty thousand dollars worth of benefit? Obviously, it's all been really great stuff.
Because that's a, that's a, I mean, is it, is it as much as having an extra set of hands?
Right.
Here, or, you know, I, 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 I get where you're coming from, and I appreciate that, and I know that that is important and. And that's why I was kind of asking, like, is it new stuff or is it just...
And I can ask her some more questions and dive into it. A little bit deeper, if you guys have specific questions, you want me to?
Maybe just like goals for the upcoming year, really?
The main thing is, is you can ask her what would be beginning in the years to come. I mean, that's the thing. That's because if we think of this as a good thing in the past and we've got some good things out there, but what's going to, that $30,000 is going to provide us what next year? You know, what are their, you know, consultants do a great job of doing things, but pretty soon you're there, you're closer to being there and you don't need your consultants much anymore. So that's, I mean, we should try and prepare around it on our own again. And if we, we've got some issues or we want to keep improving, or there's something you want to improve on, then you gotta go back and say, hey, we probably need a consulting.
Yeah, I didn't think of this too. I may be able to, I read the contract, I read it, we can get out of it at any time. We might be able to get out of the contract and then turn around and renegotiate something with them for the remainder of the year at a lesser price.
And there might be some grant money coming up again, you never know. Something forward this.
Let me reach out to her and I'll check on that stuff.
That's right, let's do it. I mean, we're kind of in a rocky, hard place right here.
Right around the general, yeah.
Promised the money and not, so.
I'll get as much info as I can.
Thank you.
It's unfortunate, I was not a real happy camper, but...
I guess if she, if it's just revolt, like, yeah, if we're paying a lot of expenses, I guess.
We have no problem with that. All right, I'll get as much info as I can and go from there.
They started the different levels this year, or that starts next year?
It sounded like it was going to be, it's right now, they're rolling with it, so.
So then they'd be able to renegotiate with that this year?
Yeah.
I think from a board person's perspective and seeing what we saw from where we were to where we are, I think it made pretty significant changes. And I think the rounding, I don't know what price tag we put on that. I mean, I think there's extreme value in that. To compare this to a paid position, I don't even, I mean, to me, the multiplying effect of what you've done would be beyond one paid position by a long shot, in my opinion.
But we've got that out of it now, so now what are we paying?
Right.
You know what I mean, like, that's awesome.
There is value in that subscribing to a continual process because human behavior is the tattoo from that, so.
Keep you accountable and keep you in line of where you're supposed to go.
Right, I mean, I understand that. But I mean, I, you know, just like he said, they have ideas because they have exposure to a lot of other districts. And to bring in those ideas and keep things fresh and new and moving forward, I think there's a lot of value in that. Yep, money's money, understand? I mean, I guess, you know, how, if you know, is there anywhere else we can cut money?
Right.
But just my thoughts, so.
And the sky's the limit. I mean, if you've been to anything or listened to them or gone to anything that, for instance, T does.
Yeah, we're not touching that.
We're scratching the surface, granted, we don't have the personal, but we're scratching the surface on some of the things that we could still do yet.
Yeah, I think there's value, I think I just need to understand what that is.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm just talking about what we've done so far.
Right, right, right. Awesome.
Yep, just a facilities review here. If you had a chance to see the sidewalk down here, outside of the second grade rooms is done. We just need a little bit of fill, so nobody breaks their ankle up the end there. Talked to Chad today, it sounds like they might be coming at the end of the week to start on the steps out here, so we're moving quick with that before the freeze comes. We had the roof inspected, we had a company come in. They inspected the entire roof and they're putting together a multi-year plan for us, just to give us an idea of the future, all the CO expenses on that. And then they did some patchwork in our old commons area out here where you've got the skylight. We had some of the works, there's walls that build up there, some of the plastic or rubber matting that fell off.
Because there is a skylight that doesn't leak?
Yeah, exactly, so.
It leaks when they're doing...
And we've had issues with it.
People always say that.
We've had issues, so they took care of that before the snow flies.
So there's stained tile there yet, or are they gone? Didn't we have some stained?
Yeah, it's kind of a, yeah, okay, type of tile. Okay, because that's a word?
Sure.
It sounds good. Acoustic tiles, we had some tiles that were put in the chorus room, Doug Dyke's room, just to deaden some of the sound there. The acoustics in there were not real good after that room was remodeled, so we finally got that done. Kind of a long story with the guy that we had doing it left. And between Katie and I, we sent a lot of reminders and they finally got it done, so. The bus rebate has been submitted and actually Ellen told me a few days ago that they got the check and it's short a long time. We got $35,000 back for that.
To pay for the bus.
Too bad it goes to the capital, man. So we're going to hopefully try to jump on that program again if it comes out here at the end of the year, which is a good deal.
You buy an overpriced bus and they give you money?
Yeah.
Because they've gone up about $30,000.
Yeah, exactly. I got you.
All that COVID money with the buses, you know? If you're a bus maker, you'd ask for more.
Next thing on here is the focus group meeting. We had our first focus group meeting on Wednesday night. We talked just a little bit about everything. We talked about our engagement with CSI. We did a playground update, we talked about Hannah Swenson's new position, back to school fair, signage, elementary curriculum, ACT, a number of things. We added a few more people because we've had some struggles getting a full crowd there. I don't think anybody missed that night. We had about 25 people there that night, which was good, so.
That's good.
It was nice, it was a good night, we had some good talk and it was a good way to start off the year.
There's some meat there that they feel that it's well worth their time to come in?
I think so for the most part. I, there were a lot of new ones there last night, so I don't think they knew what to expect.
Just if I came to listen?
Yeah, so I think once they get to a comfort level where they feel like they can say something, they will.
Do you pick up to get out, or how's it?
I did this time, yeah.
And you're just picking new people on there?
Yeah, try to get a cross-section of what they got for kids in school.
Sure.
So we're not heavy on elementary or high school.
I thought it was the best one we've had.
Yeah, it was good.
Since it started, I thought it was excellent. The content was excellent, you guys did a really nice job and what you presented. The other thing I thought about as I'm sitting there is, is maybe it's a potential for, to me, it's kind of a precursor to the school board. I mean, some of the content, it gives people kind of an inside look and, you know, maybe there's somebody that'll generate interest in being on the school board from the whole industry.
Yeah, that's true too, yeah.
Because I think there's a format there that we can parallel some of the things that we discuss within that and it's kind of an inside look for them against, you know, an out of the box input. Yep, so appreciate that.
Last thing on here is the ASVSD delegate, which you probably all received an email from, kind of picking around that. That is Friday, November 21st in Pier, starts at 1 o'clock.
So we have to assign a delegate with you every year. I've been that delegate, delegate, excuse me, for the last three years? First two years I went to Pier and you go and you, they go through all the resolutions and the legislation and you give your two cents. What does dual school district want to see this pass or not? Or how do we want our lobbyists to represent for us? And it's not always worth the drive to go there.
I'm getting on those kinds of things too.
So we can assign a delegate and then we, you know, if there is legislation that's coming up and we need to be a voice and reach out to our, you know, our lobbyist or who those state representatives are, we can do that. And we can still do that, we would just maybe choose not to go to Pier that day. But we can still assign a delegate to kind of be responsible to reaching out to those people, so. Someone wants to do it, they certainly can, or can continue to do that. It's up to you.
There's no, I'm not interested, no, I've been following the West side. But there's no teams, you can't, that's too bad because those things get pretty mundane.
Some are like, the last two that I went to, they were two hours long. So it's a long drive to just go for two hours. There's times that it's got longer, it just depends on what's for discussion, obviously, and what those opinions are, if there's banter back and forth.
Is it mostly camp or you've got the head of town, you've got these resolutions and that?
Absolutely.
So that's, that was the frustrating part of those.
And a lot of those, yeah, that's just verbiage changes. We want to change these words, but you can give your two cents on that either way.
So is it necessary to go out there?
No. I don't think so. I mean, we'll see what legislation comes and what maybe those resolutions say and we can decide then.
You get it back, you get a new resolution.
We all do, we'll all see those and we'll want to review those regardless. We'll want to know what's going on. And then we can decide closer to that time if we go over that.
Yeah.
You want to put your name on that?
I can put it unless Leah you want to, tell me.
I'd wait for it in the west.
I'll take care of it, keep me on site.
Thanks, yeah. And when we get closer, we'll review what those are.
Then you can kind of back all the things.
And then the upcoming events are listed underneath that too. Chad, do you want to go over those upcoming events?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sleet in here. Yeah, just NWEA training, we had some virtual training this past Friday. And then we've got an onsite coordinator coming this Friday from 8:15 to 10:15. So he's actually the same guy that was here two years ago, so he knows where we're at with things. Veterans Day program is November 11th. Next board meeting is on the 10th. And I will schedule an academic meeting in between seasons, once seasons get done. I'll get you a couple of weeks ahead of time, hopefully.
Who's speaking at the Veterans Day, do you have that?
I'm working on it, I've got a feel or something. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Principal.
Well, first, I just want to take a moment and recognize Leslie Katschah as our career counselor. This fall, she's already been incredibly busy. We took the juniors and seniors to LATC and Watertown High School for the college and career fair a couple of weeks ago. And then this past week, she took our ninth grade leadership and service class back to LATC for, I believe it was a construction camp. And it's been fun listening to a lot of those ninth graders talk because I think it opened up their eyes, so those are great programs. This week, we have the, we're offering the ACT this fall for the seniors and people who are choosing to do it. So that is tomorrow. And then she did have a few sign up late, so she's offering an online version on Thursday as well. So we have paper pencil tomorrow and then online on Thursday. She's been keeping busy and we have an incredible number of students doing dual credits. And so she ends up having, if they are doing a test where they need a quiet space, that's her office usually. And so she's had a steady stream of kids going in there to test and do all of that. And then coming up on the 20th, she has the financial late night that she's hosting for parents. So it's been a very busy fall for her already and we appreciate all that she does. Our seniors, I just wanted to give an update on the elementary snack drive. We outgrew the storage that they had planned for, which was really cool. And we'll start dispersing all of that soon. We've had a lot of stuff come in, so that's been really cool to see. I talked a little bit already about the college and career day in Watertown. I got to ride the bus and our kids were pretty fantastic. They had equipment set up in the back of Watertown High School where they could run some of the heavy equipment and try that out. And then they had the booth set up with all the area businesses and they had a lot of games and swag that they could get. And then at LATC, they had the college fair. And so I was really shocked at how far some of the colleges went to recruit. We had, like, University of Minnesota Duluth was there and then a bunch of schools from Iowa. It was just really neat to see how far the reach was. This past Tuesday on the 7th, we had the KSB digital citizenship presentations. I sat in on both the middle school and the high school ones and I'm so impressed with how they geared it towards that specific age level. They had completely different presentations for each group. So the sixth or eighth one, they had different case studies that geared more towards just general phone use. They did get a little bit into inappropriate pictures and stuff like that, but they geared it mostly towards cyberbullying and the stuff that we see a lot of our middle schoolers working through. The high schoolers focused a lot on, again, the inappropriate pictures and then also talked about some of the exploitation things that are happening with a lot of the high schoolers and getting into trouble with some of those pictures. And then they did a lot of interaction with the kids too, which was really neat, where they would present the case and then they would say, who do you think won this case? Or who do you think was in the right? And so the kids were able to kind of discuss and then they'd go over not just what the result was, but she went really in-depth into why the court would decide things in certain ways. And so it was really informative, I think, for everyone. We had the focus group meeting that next night and a lot of the parents had said that the kids came home and they had a lot of good conversations about it over dinners. So it was a really great experience.
It was nice to hear that people are actually having dinners at Pier too.
Right, absolutely.
Is there anything we can, like, do they provide KSB like a fact sheet of information that could be sent out to parents to learn from as well? Like, hey, we have assembly, the students are a little bit about this. For parents that maybe didn't hear about it at the dinner table, because I didn't, not that I needed to, but like...
I mean, is that going, you put that on a page for it?
They sent the slides.
Something for parents to learn.
No, that was...
No, it was pretty upfront.
Sure. And I don't even need to see the slide, just like a one-page info, like, the facts that they were saying at the conference that we went to, like, students spend this many hours, that leads to this much depression and just kind of the facts of what happens and what we should kind of avoid.
I can see if we've got something.
And we, you know, we've talked about this in the past about we do a device in some schools that, you know, put them away for the day. We're not even thinking about stuff like that, are we?
We have at the high school and middle school. Well, middle school, they're not supposed to have their phones in classrooms with them. They're supposed to keep them put away. High school, they're putting them up in the curriculum.
There are many classes that are saying that.
Yep.
I know at one time you kind of all the classes to do that, but it's better to have a little more structure there, yeah?
Yep.
Just a thought, and if no answer, that's fine. Parents could learn from a lot there too, I thought.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of stuff that the kids are dealing with that they're embarrassed to share.
Right, and parents have to do.
It was, like, fantastic too, they have all the resources on their site.
Yeah, so we wish something out there already.
Our juniors are working through some of the ACT prep. We just went into the third unit out of 18 this week. They're not thrilled about it.
No, they hate it, I'm sure.
But they are doing it. And then I just wanted to celebrate our student of the month and the names are listed for both middle school and high school. We celebrated that last week as well.
Sorry, go back to ACT prep. Is that like a class or is, to remind me again how that's structured?
We're running it through Google Classroom, but it's not attached to any class. And so the expectation is that they're working on it in their study halls.
Study hall, okay. And do you monitor and track progress in some of those stuff?
Well, everybody's going to take that, so. Every junior, senior.
Every junior.
So that's a world, some of them.
That's the offering that we offer for like the seniors and, yeah.
So the state requires us just to take the junior one?
In the spring, they all have to take it.
All juniors?
Yep. All juniors will have to take them in the spring regardless of if they've taken it before.
Does anybody, does anybody take it earlier than that? Or is that their first shot?
Last year, we had some sophomores that took it. So there are some juniors this year that have already taken it.
It's offered sixth annual year.
Yep.
I was just wondering.
Even if they take it this fall, they have to take it during testing.
That's the major, or the state now?
Yes. The state testing, we know it's not at the same time as the national testing people.
Oh, okay. ACT, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, here, please.
All right, I see my elementary student of the month listed for September as well as the Cardinal Card winners. Congratulations to all those kids. Curriculum update, I just wanted to talk a little bit and fill you guys in where we're at with our 95% curriculum. If you recall, I talked to you that we have that half hour set aside each day to truly hone in and find out where the holes are at for our kids. And this will also roll into my staff recognition. And this will also roll into my staff recognition of a couple of people that have worked extremely hard with that and getting kids tested, first of all. We did that through our title. But then also divided out and recognizing where our kids are at with their gaps and being able to get them in the right hole. We are, or in the right spot. We are planning to roll out a very soft start. Cause there's going to be some movement. There's going to be some kids moving rooms. And just that whole piece of it is going to take a little bit of time. So we're thinking soft start that last week in October potentially. And then really truly get started with this intervention piece at the start of November.
Do you put kids together based on their results?
Yeah, based on, you know, where their, where their gap might be or where if, you know, they might be really strong in this area. But this area is a little bit back further and it's, it's holding them up from even more growth. So look forward to seeing those intervention groups. We have right now about fifty-four kids in the elementary, I think, that are not in an intervention group. So then with that, we have a couple of, three staff members that will be working on some different things with those groups. But otherwise, our groups are kind of anywhere from the five to eight kiddos in the group for an intervention. So myself, Mrs. Swenson, Mrs. Palmquist, we're utilizing everybody. I mean, we're, we're all in. So it'll, it'll be great when it gets going. But yeah, we've had a few hiccups and it just, it's all new. So it takes some time. And we, I don't want to bring it out and roll start it when we're not ready. So I want to have everything ready to roll and fine tune. And that kind of rolls me into my staff recognition. I want to recognize Mrs. Crocker now as of Saturday, Mrs. Fearhelm. And Mrs. Hannah Swenson. So those two have put in a ton of time, ton of work with looking at those test benchmarks and plugging them into the curriculum, or the, the online piece of ninety-five percent. And where it shows their gaps and their holes. And we've, we've looked at it and moved kids from here to there and that type of thing. But to those, those two, they've put a ton of time into it and got kids. And we met on Friday as a whole staff and kind of introduced where our levels are at or what, how many groups we have and who's in charge of this group, that group. But without those two and, and the time that they've spent on it, it, I'd still, we'd be struggling. We'd be even further behind. So I just wanted to give those two a shout out for all their work with the, with this and getting things set up and ready to roll. We do plan meet this coming Friday, this coming Friday, the seventeenth with the elementary staff and really get things ironed out. We're going to record a lesson. And I shouldn't say we, Mrs. Fearhelm will be recording the lesson to kind of show our parents. Cause they're part of this team too. And they're actually teaching a lesson. Everything is scripted. It's not new content. So therefore we can utilize our parents in a lot of this as well. So they're going to do that. She's back tomorrow. So we're going to take a look at getting that done and just really excited. And yes, we've had hiccups, no doubt about it, but we're going in the right direction.
When is this? What day is this? What is this? Is this a once a day deal?
This is every day for a half hour. Yep. And it's really twenty-five minutes by the time that you get kids moved from room A to room B and that type of thing. So yeah, it's just true.
So how do you reevaluate?
Every fourteen days, there's a benchmark or like a, not a running record, but a benchmark thing that can be done. Some of it's at the discretion of the person in the group because if they're, if they're not getting it yet, there's not a lot of reason. But if six, seven days go by and we go, okay, this kiddo, we got them in the wrong group, which is, it's going to happen initially here. But we can, we can really give them that little benchmark score opportunity at any time. But they said there'd be movement after, most movement would be fifteen to thirty days in and out of intervention groups. So.
And you can move them at any time. It's not every twelve days you're reevaluating groups, fourteen days you're reevaluating groups and moving them. It's.
Yes and no.
For the most part, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's kind of the unknown that we have right now.
Yeah.
What's this truly going to look like and boil down to?
What are your metrics to put around these groups? What are you using?
Uh, there was a program or a benchmark test that came with this program. From there. What's that?
It isn't the map.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was just going to go. From there, you know, we have kids that didn't perform like maybe we thought they would on this. So then we went back, we looked at benchmarks on the N W A map test and utilized that data as well. No, they've got this skill. It was just a bad, you know, they, they go three, four skills and then they'd get six out of ten on that skill, which flags them as a whole. But then they'd get the next seven skills. So where truly is that gap and that hole at? And I think that's learning the, learning the curriculum and understanding how this all works. And that'll come with some time. So it's been good. Yeah. There's a lot to it. It's a big team effort. So.
It is.
Those two, without those two right now, I, we'd be, we'd be waiting.
Who's the instigator of all this?
It goes along with the science reading. I mean, if you, if you hear anything talking about curriculums and the science of reading, that's the direction and the push. And the, the true phonics pieces are the piece that I feel like we've been missing all along. So hopefully that will continue to grow. So yeah. All right. N W A, I think Mr. Sherbeck mentioned it. We did have a virtual training here this past Friday and they're onsite this coming Friday. Mrs. Han and I met with the gentleman that is going to be coming. And he just kind of wanted to know what types of things we want and gave him some guidance. And it was, it was good. He was, he's, he's very passionate. So. And he was very good when he presented the last time. So I'm looking forward to it and hopefully continue to grow off of that training. So. Conferences will be held October twenty-fourth. A signup genius I know has went out for elementary as well as middle school. So that is out there. I believe Miss, Michelle has put some things out on Facebook and we'll continue to do that just so that everybody is informed of conferences of high school or just kind of coming whenever. And the rest are, are scheduled. So with that, great turnout, middle school and elementary since we started using the signup genius. And people know when they can come and the teachers will be available. So. And then the K S B digital citizenship presentation, again, I think Mrs. Han touched on that really well. And it was neat to see, I didn't get to see any of the other ones, but visiting with people that were at the two other levels, our fourth and fifth grade, the content was definitely designed for that age kid. They talked about cell phone usage, how you use your phone, you know, this, that etiquette, Snapchat, you know, things like that. How, how you can be, you might get a, a message that you might not think is right, but you share it on. So now you're involved. And they talked about, I think, I'll use my son as an example. He came home and we had supper and he goes, Dad, I didn't know a fifth grader could get arrested for things. Yeah, bud. They used real cases, local, not obviously local, but.
South Dakota.
Yeah, South Dakota type style. So it was very good. I think I heard great things from parents at Focus Group. I heard great things from other parents that I've talked to as well. So I think it was well received and a good thing. So. Athletic director wise, congratulations to those kiddos that qualified for all state chorus. And I do have that date wrong. It's October thirty-first and November first. Addison Timmons, Claire Spilly, Shyla Tweet, Del Stormo, Kate Norgan, Isaac Boar, Miles Decker, and Lee Guy Peterson. So congratulations to those. Fall season, it's hard to believe that we are about wrapping things up. Three home varsity matches left. And now two actually probably. Region cross country is, that's wrong too. Tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Wednesday in Webster. So eleven o'clock start. Finished up our home football schedule. We have one game left this coming Friday at Mulbridge. And then just a shout out to some cross country results. Our boys have finished first in the L C C, the E C C, and the N E C. They're still undefeated. They're still undefeated. So that was without one of their top four runners for the N E C meet. So we had a kiddo that was out sick and it's questionable whether they'll be back for region tomorrow. He's got pneumonia. So.
He has pneumonia.
Battling through it though. They've had a very good year. So.
That's awesome. Way to go. Awesome. Thank you. Ellen, what's up next? Does this have to report?
Have the annual report on there. We got a letter saying that our annual report's been accepted by the state. And then we have a verification that Chad and I had to sign and send back. And then we did also meet the teacher compensation is one of the areas that we have to, that we have to meet.
So they give you like four, then you just see.
They just tell. No, they just tell you that you made it. Yeah, just tell you that you made it. Food service review, we have, well, we started already. We've spent probably at least a couple of days going through like on our ICANN site, answering a whole ton of questions and then providing a bunch of documentation for the food service review. We have a meeting on Wednesday. So through this last week, ended up changing, get whatever meeting on Wednesday. But Chad and I and Anita will sit in. And I think it'll more or less be going through what I entered into the ICANN system to say and ask questions or if I, if there's anything that I missed in there or whatever. So. They'll do that. And then they will be onsite on November nineteenth. So they'll actually, they go through and they watch, I think both breakfast and lunch to make sure, yep, everything's good. And then they pick up reviews. So our review menu is actually, it was actually last week. So we have to provide like all the labels, production records, everything for that week of menus. And so they review that also to make sure we're compliant. So that's part of the, part of the review.
How often do we do this again?
Also, every three years.
Three years, yeah. Yuppie.
Yeah. I just thought we had this semi this thing. And I thought, oh, I just have these few documents to get in there. And it's like question after question after question after question. But it's all right. I mean, and that's what I said. And when we meet Wednesday, if there's something, I'm sure she'll have questions on, if I didn't answer something correctly. So we'll go through that at that time. General fund, cash balance accountability. We just got a letter on that too. So we have to, they take your lowest monthly balance of our general fund. And you have to make sure it's under a certain percent. And that depends on the size of your school. We have to, it has to be a certain percent or lower of your total expenditures for the general fund. You know, ours is thirty percent based on our school size and we were at nineteen point two six. So we're.
So they say you have to be under thirty percent and we were nineteen.
One month.
Yep. Just one month. Yeah. So you take the lowest, whatever your lowest cash balance is that month in the general fund.
So we're good.
Yep. So we're good there. And then the five year plan. And so I have this huge document. What I did is I just, this is the one that we, I provided before. I actually just went in and I did it on a lot of my seventeen because it's way too small to read otherwise. So the first sheet is the general fund and then there's the capital outlay. And what I did is I actually went in and put the twenty-four, twenty-five, so all the actuals I put in there. And then I also put the twenty-five, twenty-six budget in. And I kind of compared that to originally like what our twenty-five, twenty-six plan. And originally, like when the general fund budget, we put in like five percent increase each year for expenses. But if I look at what we budgeted versus what the actual was from twenty-four, twenty-five, we're actually at eight percent. On that. And then if you look at actually our revenue in the general fund, we're actually, it's pretty much the same as what it was. Like what we're saying.
You just have one line for revenue, right?
For revenue, yeah. I didn't do the revenue. I didn't.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's fine.
But the revenue, we're actually virtually at zero. Cause it's about the same revenue last year, what we had budgeted, what we had for revenue last year and what we have budgeted for this year is pretty much the same. But part of that, I mean, we talked about it when we were, we talked about the levies and stuff because our, the levies went down and so did the valuations.
Valuations went down.
Valuations went down and yeah, and the, and the levy amount was less than what it was.
Why do we have zero dollars budgeted in preschool?
Preschool's in fifty-three now. So if we, yeah. It's in a different fund because we're charging for it. Yeah.
It's in fifty-three. I don't know what fifty-three is.
I knew she was just saying it's in a different column.
It's not actually in a different column. It's not even here because this is, this is general fund. So this is a fund ten is general fund. But preschool, when we were not charging preschool, was in general fund. If we charge for preschool, it has to go into the enterprise fund. So it's in a different fund. That's why there's no dollars in here.
It's fifty-three.
So it's fifty-three and a rise.
You just got to tell her. Just speak English.
So when you, if we, if we keep losing students. None of that, that number doesn't show up in the potential budget for that year, does it?
Probably not.
No. It's really where, really where, where the student count really is going to affect us is going to be in the capital outlay because that's, that's strictly.
Generating that much dollars.
Yeah.
Say that again.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Our, our capital outlay, we, we max it, what, thirty-eight hundred dollars per student? So for twenty, do the math on math, it's a much more short in regards to what we can levy.
But that'll affect us next year.
Max is what?
I think it's thirty-eight hundred.
It was thirty, it was thirty, uh, let me see.
Do we have a tracking of where it's been and how much it's gone up and all that?
So for when we were budgeting for this year, so they take the number from, of students from last year. So that was five hundred twenty-three point four students and max levy is three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars per student.
That was twenty-four twenty-five.
You have this. We've, I've handed this out. Yeah. But it's, yeah. But that's, it's on right on here. And then, so the year before, we had five hundred and twelve students, but the max levy there was three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars a student. So they tell us what, yeah, what it is and the, and the number. So it tells you, yeah, for capital. But with having less students this year, now whatever the max levy is, it's going to be based on our student count of four ninety-nine or five hundred or whatever.
That's not reflected on here. We just kept the same.
No, because, yeah, we have no, we have no idea.
We didn't know. We just left it the same year.
Right.
It's five twenty-four or what?
I think five twenty-four, I want to say. Did you leave the student?
Well, yeah. I mean, in, in this capital outlay plan, it's just strictly done by percentage. We just did by percentage, like a four percent increase. But next year, it depends on how much the actual, you know, the dollar amount that we can levy those can be based on the student. But most likely, if we're twenty-four students now and you take thirty-eight, thirty-eight hundred dollars times that, those twenty-four students, that's quite a few dollars.
Yeah. So we'll be less.
Even though they'll probably, I mean, it'll probably be more than their thirty-eight hundred, but still.
So it should be, I'm just, in the past, it was thirty-seven, something thirty-eight, something thirty-eight.
It goes up incrementally.
Yeah. Not only nine, because of the percentage that they use or what.
I, I have no idea. I just have the stuff from the last couple of years. I don't know if there's, they just tell you what the amount is. Like I said, I don't know what that's based on. If there is a certain percent they go up each year, I'm not sure on that. That's like, I don't know how they figure out, you know, when they tell us, okay, this is what you can levy, the percentages. I don't know where they, how they come up with those.
Short ball, twenty-five, twenty-six, two hundred and eighteen, two sixty-two, two oh-one. Is that what you're looking at?
That's what, yeah, that's just, that's based on the, on the general fund. That's based on like five percent increase in the expenditures and four percent increase in revenue. But you, you know, that's a guess in the tooth because our revenue actually, from last year to this year, actually went down for our general fund.
This just gives us an eye.
So we're at, so it's like, so our capital outlay, we're basically, you want to save or make up, make up the difference? So our, so it's like, so our capital outlay, we're basically, we want to save or make up the difference. At the rate of about 600, 700,000 a year. Yeah, so you don't really hit that 600, 700,000 until 29, 30. And we should bank, you know, the bank, a majority of those increases or...
From the years before, yeah.
From the years before. So we're sitting at about 3 million. Yeah, so yeah, so we have a 7, 6, 7 million dollar balance in the year two. Jettisoned out of the loss.
And the thing, like, when you look at the general fund one, I mean, with these numbers like the wind power dollar, you know, that's going to continue to decrease. So it's like, which increases the deficit that we're going to have because that's going to continue to decrease.
Yeah, it's hard on 2020.
Just label my column or label my line here. Bottom line on the general fund over there with the parentheses around the number, what's that line? What should I write for a label on that line?
The very bottom line, the negatives. That's the shortfall.
The shortfall each year, yeah.
That's all I want to know.
Yep, yes, that's the shortfall each year is what those numbers are. Yeah. And that's with leaving the wind revenue dollars in the general fund.
Okay.
So that's what the...
Same thing, this is a...
This is, so this is what we would be able to put into the extra that we would have. So this is the other way on the capital outlay, we have extra dollars, yes. Yep, so that would increase our cash.
Or make sure.
Yeah, but when we, yeah, get to the point, we have transferred, we can transfer 45% of the capital outlay dollars can be transferred to the general fund in the year.
So if they track similar, we should be about, at one point, we should, our general fund will be off by about a million. Am I not right? Because as of 29, 30, we're at 410,000 in revenue.
Oh, yep.
So we'd be about a million and we'd be still generating...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
About 700,000. So we'd have that delta of about 300,000 that we'd have to make up. Which year? Out of capital outlay. 29, 30?
30, 31.
Oh, sorry, I did not do a, okay, I'm sorry, I did not do a 30, 31 in...
No, no.
In the general, in the general fund.
That's what we were saying though, right? If we go out one more year.
Yeah, I'm just saying if we go out to when, when we run out of, if they keep paralleling or, you know, fairly similar as far as, I mean, it seems like they're tracking, you know, there's a delta there about, yeah, about, we should hit a million and we should be generating about 700,000, yeah, million dollar deficit. 700,000 in revenue in capital outlay.
Yep, yeah, sorry, I was, I thought I did that other column, but I'll do it, I'll do a 30, 31 in, on the general fund too.
I have a shortfall of 675 on the capital outlay, about 674 that year.
Right.
Yeah, and so we could potentially have a balance of eight to nine million in capital outlay at that time roughly. And what do we, what do we earn on those dollars? Do we earn, do we earn interest on it?
Yeah, we'll earn, yeah, interest on that. And that's something that I probably need to look at, I mean, because I think we've been conservative on that amount. But once we, you know, as we look, can continue to look at it to see what the, what the revenue is. Because we have the 2 million in a CD and then we get interest every month actually on the rest of it. So it'll be interesting to see because I don't, I don't even remember what we put in the budget for the revenue for interest.
Yeah, I don't either.
But it's possibly going to be higher than...
2%?
Than...
2%, 2%?
Well, I'm just saying it's going to be more because it's a dollar amount that we put into the budget. So it's probably going to be higher than what, than what's in here. You know, if we continue to be able to put these dollars in the bank or...
Which we should try to.
Yeah.
Our capital expenses every year are about this, you know, 1.5 million, whatever.
Right, they've been pretty consistent, yeah. The payment's in there online and that's the actual payment each month. So under debt service, 5110 debt service, if you go across that one, that's the actual payments that we have. So those, so that's not increased by, let's say, the 3% or the 6% or whatever. That's the actual amount taken off of the, yep.
And that's already a decent amount.
And so that, yes, that one's in there. So the rest of the expenditures increase, for example, by say 6%. I have the other columns, but that one does not increase by 6%. That's exactly what is in our, the bond repayment schedule is what's on there.
Am I reading this right and why should we have a 6.9 million dollars cash balance in 30, 31?
What's that?
Why should we have that? Is that...
Because we keep adding to it every year.
Why should, because we keep adding to it every year?
But I mean, should we be adding to it at that amount? That's quite a burden, no problem.
Well, because eventually we're going to have to pay for our general fund.
Yeah. So that's where I was going and trying to figure out, okay, so can we build up enough principal where we're generating enough revenue off of that to basically pay that difference? So if we're running in that 2, 500,000 dollars, what's our target to hit to that, that principal number in the, in the, in the capital outlay? So we can basically now understand in capital outlay, we may need it for a building at some point or some building project or those types of things at some point. So my point is, is I don't want, we need that, we need that revenue. You think we need that, almost $7 million cushion though? Yeah, yeah.
It's our only safety.
It's our, right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a lot of schools that are already using, but we don't, I mean, we don't need to. We don't want to, we can't, we don't want to transfer that into the general fund now because we have to meet our cash accountability. So we can't be shoving money into the general fund. But when we get to the point where we need that, then we can transfer up to 45% of the revenue each year. So you may be using some cash balance in your, if you have to transfer enough money into general fund, you may have to say the whole 45%. You may have to use some of the other reserve money that you have in capital outlay for capital outlay.
But that, yeah, well, that principle proved itself when we did this project to some degree. But we also, I mean, just, I think the longevity, I mean, there's a lot of stability in that. I mean, I feel quite a bit better looking at those numbers knowing that there's, that when the wind money goes, there's going to be enough of a base there in capital outlay to cover that difference.
Well, that's not, that's just on here. I don't, I didn't print off the one to win. Do you have the win one? But now, and I'm not sure... Is, I'm not sure if, well, I have the, yeah, I have it on there up through the 29, 30. But there, yeah, because that's where it starts going down every year. But also, I'm not sure, I...
That's our last one, no?
No, that's not our last one, the 410. It's going to continue to go down. There'll still be, there'll still be some wind revenue for a few more years.
681, you have 681 next year.
But one of them is where we also, so I would need to look at that, where we added in the wind farm that they're talking about building. But I've heard that that's not going to happen right away.
So all the, the wind monies will be out in 2030. We'll receive the last set of funds in that year. So starting in 2020.
But is that with the new wind farm?
And then the new wind farm, that is projected to start in 2028. So there's, and then doesn't end until 2036. Wow, that's as long as it's projected.
Plus nine years.
So that's maybe...
And is that first year prorated? Is that what that blog changed?
It's not in here, but it could be.
That's what they changed as a full year.
We don't, we don't know what it is. It depends on when they start the wind farm off, that's, yeah.
And to deal with this, this data center, they're talking about property taxes, you know, going down because of the value of that, you know, and that's not here yet, but I mean, they say we're going to get it someday.
Right, but how much would that affect, is that going to affect ours?
Well, it isn't like a wind dollars bill.
No, but it affects property taxes and the regulations.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to think, is that going to affect our levying ability? I mean, my question, is our levy against all the property in our school district property tax? Or is it the county's property tax?
School district.
It's our school district. Because we get a little bit from like Hamlin County and Grant County too because a little bit of our district is in those two counties.
So property taxes, that helps, won't help us at all?
No, don't matter, no, it's not in our district.
So 26, 27, one thing that might hinder our revenue a little bit is going to be that 3% cap on owner occupied.
Yes, or what else comes out of the situation here.
Increases because there's, in the county, there's been some pretty much significant jumps in the last three to five years. In assessment values on owner occupied. Well, that's, you know, there's some tax legislation they're going to talk about this year. I think they didn't pass any last year, is there? So that was kind of...
Yeah, that's all, yeah. All variables, but, you know, I guess as they happen and we...
And is the capital outlay going to increase so much a year? Is that general fund or capital outlay? That you can only levy so much increase every year and no, we got that.
They tell us each, I mean, like, so each year they tell us what we can, what we can levy for...
General fund.
For general fund and they, they tell us exactly what we can ask for capital outlay because that's based on the student count the year before. And then whatever the amount per student is, that's all we can ask for.
Well, interesting, things, a lot of, a lot of variables to consider. Thanks for doing that.
Oh, yeah, how often do we want to look at this? Once a year? Twice a year?
I think twice, yeah, I think twice a year. I don't think it hurts, so I, at least twice a year.
Yeah, the only thing is always we don't really have updated numbers, you know what I mean? Because it's like, nothing's really updated on here unless we know something specific. But otherwise, I mean, I just update it. So at the end of the year, once we have the numbers, then I put the actual numbers in here to say, hey, you know, where were we at compared to what we thought we were going to be?
I think, you know, once a year on this plan because you don't have any definitives that change during the year.
If there's things that change, I mean, we certainly can plug those in and...
All of a sudden they put a data center in two miles out of Claret Lake, then we can change numbers, you know?
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, I'd like to look at this every two times a year, but nothing changes between now and just...
Oh, yeah, then we get, I mean, we can run it off and we can look at it again if you want to.
It's just staying current, you know? I don't remember a lot of year, but I mean, it just keeps it on here.
Yeah. So if you want to look at it later, we can, I can run them off again. And like I said, if there is anything that changes, we can plug other stuff in there and...
Well, April is in six months.
Pre-budget discussions will be in March, right? So I mean, probably would be...
Maybe look at it then when we're...
March, we'll just say.
Yeah, thanks. It's a lot of info, but yeah, and I think once we continue to go along because with the building project, it had a skewed number. So it was kind of really, it's hard to see where exactly we were at on some of the stuff. But I think now, once, since that's done, we'll have...
And we have debt service off the, is it 38? Is it 41?
I have it in here, but I found something through.
I don't know if I have, I don't think I have the debt service stuff in here, but it's quite a few years old. Put it that way. I don't, I didn't, I made a copy of the debt service stuff, so I don't have it.
We, we've got it before. Any other things on your report? I covered it all, right?
I think so.
All right, so Wade, you want to talk about any other?
Yeah, we met on the 15th of September in Watertown, in Lake area. Financial report, again, pretty straight color there. We just purchased a new vehicle. I guess that was one of the bigger items. Assistant director's report, I got a lot there. Talked about purchasing a new defibrillator for the office in Haiti. Her director's report, she talked about starting a new SED teacher meeting online. It meets periodically just to cover new issue, or issues that new teachers are going to encounter. Thought that was a good, good thing to put in place. Board of advisors meeting, she recapped on that. Talked about new personal development opportunities. We discussed other, other training opportunities, how to support the EGRL issues, programs that could be provided in the future. They did form a committee, I guess, to explore that. I've talked about this a little bit before. They're looking at their building in Haiti and trying to figure out what they want to do with that because it means work. They've gotten an estimate back at just about a half and running in 494,000. That's where the estimate came in. There's cement work on the exterior, the cistern needs to be filled in, there's ceiling and flooring that needs to be replaced, plumbing that needs to be replaced in restrooms, redoing electrical, there's some HVAC upgrades that need to be done. And so we're just trying to figure out what feasibility that is versus potentially just looking at a new building. So, yeah, I guess that's pretty much what we covered.
Probably the building unit.
It's pretty old.
Was it here with Salt Lake Cove and Farm?
Yeah, it was the only, yeah, precise.
30, 40 million.
Yeah, it's somewhere there, 40, 40s.
All right, that's the reports. Our next meeting is November 10th. Any other business? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Wade?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?